What time are we done today?
Well, it says 12:30 we're doing commission.
Are you just trying to vote?
Okay.
I just want to vote if they're...
It is Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020. We'll call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to know more?
Okay. Any minutes or reports received and filed?
No.
Okay, we're not, we're gonna forego our liaison reports and upcoming needs and events. Do we have any bids and contracts? Okay, any unfinished business? New business? Well, we don't have John till late 30, so 9:30 we have Brian Ridenhour with Information Systems.
Yep.
Fire right.
Good. All right. You got any changes?
No changes. Well, I mean, the only change I do have...
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, so anyway, I know I sent you guys the documentation, but I printed you out a copy of it. The, the main thing that I wanted to change, I've got some good news and some other good news. But, uh, but anyway, I'd ask for, I'd ask for an increase for Brent Fisher. Um, I know it's, it's, it's hard to, I know it's hard to kind of wrap your hands around kind of what we do, but over the past four years, I've been and my department's been involved in upgrading pretty much the entire county infrastructure when it comes to network security, servers, things like that. So a big part of that has been this big effort for virtualization. What that is, is it takes basically hardware boxes and turns them into just images, and we run them all on like one platform. So we've been able to decrease, we've been able to decrease the amount of hardware that we have to have in stock to accomplish what other servers have been doing. So Brent came over from, uh, from his previous place of employment, and he is a specialist in virtualization. So I was able to leverage his skill sets immediately in order to help the county out as far as decreasing the amount of hardware inventory that we have. So when we decrease the amount of hardware inventory we have, we also decrease the amount of maintenance we pay, and just the overall cost goes down. Uh, the amount of storage that we have to have goes up, but it doesn't go up in relationship to the amount of hardware platforms we support. So to have somebody like that on staff is, is, to me, is crucial and be able to keep them and things like that. With his skill sets that he has, he is already in here at a, at a pretty good price. But I highly recommend that we go ahead and give him an increase in order to keep that skill set viable and available to us over, over time. So that's the only difference that I think Kristen and I had when it came to talking about that budget was, I think you took that out, and I would like to keep it in there. So I don't, it's not that, it's not that much, it's a five...
Twenty-five cents an hour?
It's like a $5,000 annual.
So I look at this book.
Is this what you emailed us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 'cause that was a zip file. I get scared when you send zip files. Oh, my goodness, I'm just angry about it. So all of these were just all the attachments and...
Correct. This, this supporting documentation that does with the spreadsheet.
Okay, thank you.
So I also put a letter that has more detail in it.
Can I get two more copies, one for...
What page are we on, Kristen?
Okay.
What page?
Um, I don't know.
Forty, fifty?
It's up on the screen, too.
Okay, so I got my breakfast. I forgot to put it on library. The chica loca, here we go.
Um, so there were multiple requests for merit increases. They all got taken out because there's no merit in there at the moment. I'm not in any way opposed. We just have a hard time figuring out a good way to do merit with the different sized departments and things that we have. Are we picking and choosing only the ones that requested it? Are we giving a flat dollar amount? Are we giving an extra percentage? It just gets hard with the variation of departments and things going on. So all of the merit was taken out at the moment. It's not saying that it couldn't go back in. Or if you wanted to just consider Brian's an adjustment to Brent's salary, you could do that as well.
All right.
No more questions.
And Brian, we usually discuss salaries last, so we'll come back around to it later. If you guys don't have any questions for Brian.
Um, yeah, does he have any capital? Capital stuff?
So if you got, uh, it's on...
One twelve or...
Well, what I, I got the spreadsheet, but I submitted four busy requests. But, uh, but yeah, I mean, I've got, um, an exchange server upgrade. And like I said, all this supporting documentation goes with it. I've got some workstations upgrade, uh, things like that. I'm still working towards getting like this phased cycle as far as getting the workstations on a cyclical kind of thing where they're not all done at one time. Uh, unfortunately, when I started, about everything was, was ready to expire. But, uh, that seems like I've kind of got a really good handle on that. I also included like a spreadsheet that has a total number of servers and devices that we support, which it should be on page three if you have the report. Right now, it's standing at 351, just computers. It doesn't count network switches, routers, firewalls, all those things like that, so...
Where's Brian's capital request at in the budget book?
Um, it is not. Brian's is kind of a moving target at all times. We don't really usually set like these are the things. He kind of submits a list of, you know...
Total, total number?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I was just looking for the total number, and I mean, obviously...
Um, there's 225 in, 225,000 in the sales tax budget for computerization.
And I think that's down, isn't it, from last year?
Um, it's the same, so usually that's the same number. Brian doesn't usually spend it all.
Right.
Um, it's just kind of a floating number we have for computerization if things come up. And like I said, sometimes things move up or down the list based on what happens and what we need to do right then.
Okay, so it'd be on page 113. You got computerization, 225, what you're looking at.
And his, his list of requests did not add us to 225. It's just that's the set number we've been putting in there for computerization.
So like I was looking at the amounts so far that's in the system. I'm well under that right now, right, as far as this year goes?
Um, yeah.
So, so I really try to do what I can.
So as I look at Brian's list here, he's at 235. If I'm looking at page two?
The spreadsheet?
Yeah, page two on the spreadsheet, you're at 235.
Right. Yeah, as long as I got my spreadsheet right.
You may not have to do all those, or is all those, all that needed, or...
Well, uh, what I did is I went through and, and I took requests. So for instance, uh, the EMS upgrade, the internet upgrade, and that includes a fiber connection, and the domain migration isn't really up. But I could, I could probably not do like 5,000 or 6,000 of it. Uh, the domain migration though, we have, we've got to get done because they have some, all the HIPAA stuff that we have to be concerned about and things like that. Uh, I'm not sure in the MEOC, it says phone system talk. Okay, so we're also within that, um, you might talk to Sierra. So the R-SOC, R-SOC fund might actually cover the phone system and the fire, Marocque firewall and the switch for the MEOC, and that's about 20 grand right there.
So that'd be some grant funds through the RPC that, through R-SOC.
And then also, um, the Public Works Fund will cover their computers, laptops, monitors, and tablets, the tablets. So, so all of mine says 235. It's, you know, there's, yeah, it's kind of a...
It's comprehensive list of everything. So Public Works has theirs in their budget.
Right.
Okay.
So here's where Brian's at right now. So he's only spent 30,000 of the 225 this year, and he has another 18,000 in coverage at the moment.
Right. And I've, I've got some additional workstations that, that's why I was looking at it yesterday because I was needing more. I actually have kind of found a, a better deal on computers through the state for Brainerd Center, like half.
Oh.
Yeah, so I might take and try to take advantage of that. And then also, uh, in my, inside my, um, inside my budget, I've got a managed network services proposal, and I talked to Huber, um, yesterday, and I had them create like a bundle price. So right now, if you piece like, we're doing like all our stuff, all the card, and I'll give this to you as well. So the top part is kind of what we have going on currently, and then the bottom is, is what they're proposing. And actually is, uh, it's less expensive. It saves us about 25 grand over a three-year period.
So is it five?
Uh, no, this is not. This is, this is hot, the press.
You got another one for Perry.
How do you teach your, get virtual of this stuff?
So, so anyway, uh, it's, is, uh, so the front page is kind of like the synopsis of what goes on in the back page. So if you look at the front page, right now, we're buying all those products individually and, uh, from like various vendors, but they also offer those same kinds of services. Plus, uh, if we go ahead and contract with them, they'll, like I said, they'll save us money over the long run, but it'll also, uh, will get more value out of that because they roll in. So we've been trying to have this employee training, security awareness training and things like that. And I have done a very good job about getting that rolled out this year because of all the different other projects we had going on, but they actually manage that for us. So there's just a lot more to that with that program. And like I said, in the long run, it saves us, too. So I would like that, you know, this isn't an additional, this isn't an addition. This actually takes away part of what we're expending and saves us money. So like I said, this is kind of a, kind of a late thing, but I called them and I said, "Hey, what else can we do in order to make this more, uh, more viable program, things like that?" And so Dustin Chalmers Meyer, he put, put that together for me, and I would, I'd like that to be considered. Like I said, that's not in addition to what I, what I'm doing. That's to replace some, and it actually bring down the amount of money I'm spending, so... Any questions?
So what is a network redesign? I mean, is that just help, uh, or just try to?
Yeah, so, so anyway, so like the cut-down version of it is, is, is the county has like a multiple location, multiple networks going on, and he, and as far as like the security and things like that, each network's kind of assigned its own number, right? They call them V-Lanes. So over time, those things have kind of like, not the past four years, of course, but over time, over time, they, they kind of got convoluted.
Kind of piecemeal.
Right, piecemealed together and stuff like that. And so part of what I've been trying to accomplish is, is kind of bring order kind of back in from the chaos, so to speak. And so what I asked them to do was give me a proposal to, uh, to do that. So the proposal that they gave me to do that was 18 grand, which is in that budget. But if we go with this program, they waive that. So that's why it's so much more cost-effective to kind of go with this program versus just kind of continue and piecemeal. And so, you know, in a, in a perfect world, I would have time to do all the things that that company does, but I, I, we just don't. I mean, we're busy keeping up with the ad hoc requests, trying to do some strategic planning along the way and things like that. So, so that's kind of what that, what that is, is them going through and basically straining out a lot of what needs to be straightened out within the, the network hardware.
So it's not just a design, it's a design and implementation using existing hardware that we have?
Yeah, we went through and, and I know I hate to even say it, right, because every day something comes up like COVID, right? But, uh, we've replaced all of our network switches, routers, uh, things like that. So we've got all of it under maintenance. So we should, only thing we should have to do now is kind of get things straightened out to get, you know, like a managed type.
No, it makes sense. I like this.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Why did it take you so long to do this?
I know, right? Four years. But yeah, so...
Sounds like a good idea, so...
Yeah.
Well, I don't have anything further, so I appreciate your time.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, hold on. Do you guys need your copy of the book Brian handed out?
This one I do.
There's one for Dawn. I need one for me.
I, I gave her the book that...
So this is the, okay, I'll get it for you.
I need that whole book, but I'd like to have the first couple pages.
Three, one for Dawn, one for Debbie, and one for me.
Sheriff John Wheeler.
So do we scan these documents and put it anywhere with each? I mean, with like the minutes, so not that I'm worried about Haldeman, but you know, if he leaves and he doesn't get a copy of the document, can you go back and find it somewhere?
That's why we're getting a copy for Dawn, so she should have a copy of it and get it out with the minutes.
And then have it go with the minutes, so you can go online and get that or a, a year or two.
I hit Justin up. So...
I got this email, so I don't need mine. Someone else needs one.
Page 98, if you're following in the book.
So we turned in our, um, our budget, um, to Kristen, and then she had some issues with it, and we worked together to come up with what you, what, what we're going to present you today. And these are about 10 bullet statements of what, what's changing in my budget. So the first thing is a jail deputy position. So last year, they came to me and wanted to add another jail deputy, a jail investigator to jail. Someone that can do, help do some classifications, someone that can do, uh, background investigations on new employees, someone that can listen to the phones for especially for specific cases. I didn't, I didn't want to do it at that time, so I gave them a test and evaluation, I guess you could call it, and told them to go ahead and put someone in that position. And I said, "If it worked out, then I would go to the commission the following year." Well, it, uh, it is paid for itself tenfold. So I had asked for a jail detective position down there, um, and the money was not in the budget for that jail deputy position. However, we were able to keep her as a detective and just increase her money for the detective's type. We give the other detectives a hundred dollars. Um, the next one was SWAT. Currently, they get, uh, $40, I think. Yeah, they get $40 a month to be on SWAT. It's a very physically demanding, time-consuming. They train eight hours a, a month, and then on top of that, we average about, this past month, we averaged about, or this past year, we averaged about one call out a month. But that's not really accurate. I think it was more like the last six months, we had 12, 12 callouts. So, and that's on, I put on there doper time because we're taking people away from their family. Doper time is we're going to hit a house, and we have to wait till the person gets there if they're going to re-up, and they're going to go get more dope. So we have to position our people and be ready. So sometimes they can be in position waiting for two to three hours, waiting for the person to come back. Because it's, you know, they don't, there's not really, those dopers, they don't really sleep. They don't have a, a schedule they actually keep. At first, that was taken out, but we were able to work with Kristen to get that back in and increase it to, uh, $1,800 a year for the, for the SWAT team members. The next one was a hostile negotiator. Uh, they were getting $20 a month, and they have, uh, they train four hours a month, but they have three certifications that they have to do. This helps us where we don't have to use force on a barricaded subject or an incident where we need a, a suicidal subject. We're able to call out those individuals, this team, and they're able to, uh, call out and actually shut down operations so we don't have to use force, and that has been successful several times in the past also. Uh, the next one is, uh, starting salaries for deputies. We're at 37,000. I want to raise it up to 38,800. That, she did put that in the budget. We have an issue with, with personnel, and you guys know that. Calaway County has raised theirs to 41,200. Boone County raised theirs, JCPD raised theirs, I think Osage County raised theirs. And while you say that, it's not going to affect us that much. The deputies that we have in the jail will leave us to go to be able to work the road. Now, that's helping us, being able to send them to get post-certified has helped us because they had to sign the three-year contract, but we still have to be able to be competitive with the surrounding areas, and like I said, it isn't, it isn't a budget. And I'll talk about the 2% cost of living and how we, that's, that raising the salary to that, we utilize the 2%. So, um, modified civilian salaries. We haven't really modified it to any size to align with the other county job descriptions. And we also wanted to adjust for longevity, like we did our deputies about two years ago. With the deputies, we went $500. We give them a 500, a one-time payment of $500 per year up to seven years. With the, uh, speaking with Kristen, uh, salaries was not, the funding just wasn't fair. We weren't able to get the funding to adjust salaries, but we were be able to do the longevity payments of $250 for each year in, in a position for up to five years. So if you've been with us for five years in a, in a position, you could get an extra $100, but a $150, I think it was. So, uh, that, that just helps us, again, with compression that we have with compression. It also hires some of the newer people we have. Everybody wants to make sure that they have a, um, a, a way to get, a way to be able to advance. This allows us to be able to do that, so when someone that comes in the workforce isn't making the same salary as someone who's been with us for four years. Uh, we wanted to move our carry forward. Oh, I forgot on there. So, um, we want to increase the part-time salaries by $1 an hour. We're not asking for any money on that. We think we can do that with the funds we currently have, so that's actually a budget-neutral issue. Uh, we'll just have to watch our part-time money's really good. Seven, uh, we want to reimburse the, the half of the person that we pay right now with CCW funds out of 702 and absorb that in because the CCW funds is going, is going down. So I'd like to, to fully encompass them within our budget. The money wasn't there at this time, we couldn't do it, so we just couldn't fund that. Uh, move the carry forward account from 705 for criminal asset seizure, Mustang asset seizure, inmate biometrics. There's no, uh, revenue line for those. So, so actual revenue line, so all it shows is three expenditures. So if we have, and I don't remember what we have right now, but if we have $108,000 in the asset forfeiture, then it shows as an expenditure whenever we're doing our budget. So it actually, it's money that's carried forward, and it's actually a case away from us to be able to use our operational budget. So, uh, we worked with, uh, Kristen and moved that to a separate division, 705, so it made it easier for us to have an actual, uh, a good budget, a realistic one. Increase our training funds in 701, 15,000 offset costs for free people to get post-certified. That has worked out very well for us. We've been doing it for two years now, is that right, Bill? About two years. And, uh, it's worked out very well for us. After these individuals go to get post-certified, uh, they have to sign a contract with us for three years. And that's, and again, that's also a great recruiting tool, so not, not a lot of agencies are doing that. And then the last one is we wanted to add a line in 701 for public relations of 8,000, and we weren't able to get that. We went for, uh, 4,000. And what that would be is stuff that we could use to buy when we go out to neighborhood watch programs, when we go for recruiting, when we go to, um, uh, job, uh, computer...
Fairs.
Yeah, when we go to, to employment fairs and stuff like that, so. Uh, and the stickers we give the kids during the, in school and all that kind of stuff, so... And basically, those are the 10 things that we would, we want to put in our budget. And currently, the, the budget that we've worked with, uh, Kristen adding all these things that we just put here, I'm still a positive $547. So it's a, it's a, it's a life budget.
$594.
Is it 94? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I sang grass. I tried to say 50 for myself there.
Pie for pie.
I don't think I have any questions.
So what's the, I mean, creating 705 to track this, but I mean, so we have, looks like we got revenue coming in.
So there is. There's some revenue, but like, they took over the, the Mustang account for asset seizure. It had about $107,000, I think, when they took it over, that came into their budget.
Right.
It doesn't bring in that kind of revenue during the year, so it's sitting in their cash forward. So we pulled those carry forward accounts down into a separate department to track those by themselves. So there will be some revenue that comes in, but they also have carry forward amounts in each of those that make the expense larger than the revenue. And that, most of those are created by statute or by, um, federal funding that require the money to be kept in that account and used for specific things.
So the Mustang asset forfeiture, that's money coming in, right?
It may be. So we may get money, but whom we may not.
But it looks like it's an expense.
There's both. So they, anything they bring in, they get to spend on Mustang. So anything coming in, they, it's restricted to be spent on that. And in some years, it's more than what they spend, so they have a carry forward amount that they're carrying forward every year that's larger than the revenue coming in.
But I don't see the, I don't see it in the revenue side.
Page 100, it just doesn't say Mustang on there, though.
Well, so there's grants and reimbursements on page 99, Mustang asset forfeiture, but there's no revenue coming in to offset the expense. And you got 128,008.13, but there's no revenue.
That's the problem, but it will show as an expenditure.
So up on the screen is that fund. It balances by, or that department, it balances by itself. So there's $181,000 in carry forward amounts in those three accounts.
That's now in 705 on page 100.
Correct, correct. And we don't know what that asset forfeiture revenue is going to be every year. It depends on what they turn over and what the feds give us back. So there's no revenue amount to put in there until we actually get something from the fed.
So where'd you say the carry forward was from?
Uh, 181, 174. So we created a separate cash forward in 705 here. And then this department balances by itself. So the carry forwards in those set aside accounts, plus the revenue and expense for the year, they balance together to net to zero. Immate security biometric works the same way. So the biometric fees and the inmate commissary go into inmate security biometric by statute. It's only $72,000 revenue during the year, but they have 118 total, including that revenue that they can spend due to carry forward amounts from previous year.
But you're really just changing it for accounting reasons.
Right, so it's no different than what we would have budgeted as a revenue and expense. We just created that cash forward and pulled them out of its other funding so you could see that carry forward piece by itself.
Yeah.
I don't think we can show a revenue, uh...
I don't think we can show a revenue leaving. No. The, the difference is like, civil, my civil fees, we know that's fifty thousand every year, we know it, so we can put that in the revenue line. But we have no idea on this other one. And the way the laws just changed, that asset forfeiture is going to go even lower.
Your witness?
I'm good.
Oh, okay. I thought it was your turn to get after him.
I, I don't see a QRV, a quick response. Oh, okay.
Well, they'll get one as soon as they have some kind of asset forfeiture, there's your red Corvette.
No, I got the red Corvette today.
I know, but they're gonna.
I parked it out there just because.
There's a little, there's a little test or something under the handle.
This is what I brought it, so, it's, it's his birthday today.
Your nose is a little white. Oh, it's your mustache, never mind.
It's his birthday today, the Carvetts.
Oh.
Yeah. Pie later, we'll have pie.
I, yeah, I don't have anything else to run, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Kemp.
Hey, fetch one. Uh, one thing on Capella today on the Prager parking lot, I did not have a figure in there for that commentary part. I bet you're gonna be up there, it's thirty-five or fifty. So, it's twenty-five thousand, I guess, that we can steal for out.
Is that just for in front of the dumpster?
Yeah.
That's not the asphalt parking lot portion?
Asphalt was a number we had gotten prepared a couple of years ago to do that.
I didn't think there was a number in there.
I didn't have a number in there.
I thought it had a number in it.
Well, maybe, maybe you had submitted one, but no, oh, Michael did, so. He probably didn't know what the cost was going to be.
I'm pretty well looking at everything back to the, to this year and next year. The only thing that, that I know of that's going up right, uh, our cleaning supplies are, went up three percent for next year, but I should be able to keep that in mind. Our repair company is, uh, strong people, we, electric people, uh, AT and C, most of those guys are taking a ten percent hike in their max fees. Our elevator contract went up, I think, two percent, so that was figured in. Pretty well, everything is kept the same. Our utilities over the last nine years, we've been able to keep either close to same with budget from the prior year, or have gone down. I've noticed on jobs that the sheriff's actually went down almost seven thousand dollars over the last year and a half. Products we're using to reduce energy costs are working. One of the big things we need to look at is water softener over there. Contractor where that originally put it in was in yesterday. We're gonna have some issues with it using too much salt and the water not shutting off again. And he made a comment, he made the comment that this thing's never worked from day one. So, that'd make me happy to come here.
So, it's never worked since day one, so whose fault?
Right, since day one, so.
So, whose fault, I mean?
Actually one of the built, the horse here, but of course that company was out of business, I've got to deal with that. So, we're gonna have to look at that, maybe places or find somebody that can fix it where it works right, we don't have to keep having any problems. The only guy I put in really for next year, I've probably got two employees leaving. I did ask for next year full-time to start marketing the building for, before I lose people. Because losing one person, two weeks try, two, two to three weeks training, just doesn't work. You can get more or less at. And this person I'd like to hire to start working in your building for a week at a time and keep rotating, learn on all the buildings. That way, if I lose somebody at one building, I can put him in that building and hire another full-time to start marketing it again, and roll training. But it'll also help out for vacation time, I've got a lot of employees now, I've got multiple years. And the vacation keeps growing because I have ten years, you get four days. So, I've got three employees right now, they're over two hundred and forty hours right now, they need to take some vacation before the end of the year. That way it'll help with other things. Jail is starting to become a place where I can get these, there are questions some days, and a whole new person. Most of the other buildings are, we're just ten years old and equipment's worn out. So, it's, good job, good test, too, I mean, it's, you know, it's a big building, it's a, it helps.
So, could you take the one from health department and have her come over in the afternoon?
I'm already using her elsewhere. She is actually starting to be cleaning EMS, and she's gonna be cleaning a couple hours during the day out there to help out down there. She, Julie, watch how I say this. She does a good job cleaning, her mechanical skills are not, and that's not what I hired her for. She does a good job cleaning. I believe in that, being really more full-time person that can qualify as well as they clean like the rest of the guys are.
So, would this be the one that in the future would move up to your deputy or?
It could be a future assistant to me, yes. I've still got a couple in-house that some days I'm happy with, some days I don't want to talk to them, so it's, uh, yeah, it's playing the game. It's, you know, like I said, I've got two that are pretty decent right now. I'd probably move that to an assistant right now, if we had a decision open, but I don't think I'd put that in the budget for this year.
So, when are the two leaving?
That offense, if they tell me, who's gonna leave, that's a problem, I don't, I've heard two different stories already. One's leaving and then, yeah, because of this fault, and I heard he's gonna stick around out here, so I don't know what he's doing.
So, of the six additional employees, one of them is a maintenance, this is what we're doing in the budget currently. He did request two, but there's one in there.
And with, I don't know when, you know, I know the judges asked for more clean, so we have one or two. I know we've got right now, we're cleaning right now, so we have a month. So, you know, there's, there's a place I can use personal alert there, so.
He did a call back.
So, you haven't used anything for uniforms this year at all?
I have not, uh.
Do you ever check any of those pants with maintenance?
Yes, I did, I checked in with air mark for uniforms. Set of eleven, they deliver eleven uniforms, pick up five every week. And the total bill per person was gonna be three hundred and twenty-eight bucks per person. And I kinda showed, uh, it's about a jean, jean type pants, it's a part of jean knit pants. I don't know, I put money in there for, a step money in there for them to go buy three pair of jeans and just break it in a receipt like I think.
Yeah, I said just get my closing, clothing allowance and.
That way, they just want jeans to replace the ones that, you know, they get bleach and stuff on, which I don't like. I brought a couple pair of jeans already this year myself, bleach shirts, so. No, I was gonna get with, with this cover, I was gonna get with Bill and get some more shirts, right enough to do so.
So, trying to look at screen printing, then, they don't need to be?
Yeah, I don't know if Bill is screen printing that or not, or. I don't remember, I don't remember getting a bill for my last year's.
Didn't bill us?
Might not have.
Well, yeah, the embroidered shirts, I mean, you can get them probably two or three screen printing shirts for that price.
Yeah.
That's, I don't know, it's obviously don't get paid a lot, so if they got clothes that are being run because of the jobs they're asking them to do, then I'd like to try to. And it doesn't have to be the uniforms that we do through Public Works, but you know, that's an option or the other option, like you said.
What the Public Works is getting, because they brought it to me, and then he brought me a couple other, and I wore them in other places and they're hot. And the shirts are not comfortable at all, so I'm trying to.
I'm not saying we force them to wear them, I'm just saying it's an option for them, they can pick and choose if they want to wear them, and they've got winter and spring type, summer heavier, summer lighter. I got different jeans that I wear too, you know, you're gonna be out in the middle of summer working outside on a deck or something, you're not gonna wear the heavy pair of jeans.
Right.
So.
Like I said.
I don't mind giving them the allowance to work on, replacing some of the stuff that's damaged when they're using them.
Yeah, it's moving down there on uniforms, so it's gonna take that. Need all the uniforms in my middle.
Kristin? Yep.
Such a price of fancy today, see how, see how much the sheriff's name is cost, only thirty-eight bucks?
For what?
They're comfortable, aren't they?
For what?
A lot of pockets.
They're not thirty-eight bucks?
Sixty-eight?
A little higher.
I think you actually.
We can drop down.
Well, the tactical, like you have on, or like the ones I have on?
The ones I have on are like sixty-five.
Yeah, so sixty-five dollars.
You actually got a pair along with a fly also, I heard.
Twelve hundred, twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah, I figured, uh, uh, three pair of pants and three shirts, so. I mean, the horses to get there. I mean, the pants I, I buy horses, they're eighteen dollars a pair, so.
Bet those last about a month.
They're pretty fair.
Catch them on a door and unrip them and that.
Yeah, yeah, or a sheet, that'll probably, yeah. But that's, you know, three shirts, fifty bucks. I don't really embroider shirts or else you're gonna, so. That's why I figured it'd be uniforms. The guys seem to like it too, they'll go pick their own pair of pants out. You know, have embroidered or screen printed shirts.
I don't think I have any questions. Anything else to add?
Still working on some remakes for Mandarin, should know here in a couple of weeks. Starting Monday, I will be on vacation. See you next year.
Pray God it doesn't snow.
Yeah, the public works, they're still working on, uh, we have one more personal capital.
Do you guys want to talk about his list of equipment and capital? It's back on page one, twelve of them. Everybody questions about it, that section there, it's his equipment capital, not his building.
Might as well, might as well.
It's just so small.
Gets smaller every year sometimes.
Because the list gets bigger.
Uh, David, for Cliff, I got the Cliff talking on, uh, what contracts he's in, oh.
Yeah, you all need to wake up.
Oh, yeah, she's been running her all the time, she knows that on purpose.
Sorry, now I can see it, right?
Uh-huh, that's why she wasn't asking, you can't see her laughing.
Here, I can get it up on screen, do it.
I can see it now. Got with Cliff on how the state contracts work, contracts buying his fleet vehicles through. He kinda walked me through how he does his. So, we gotta put a truck together, pickup truck together, and time to get the radio in there and, uh, couple of other things, uh, fire signature and the safety triangles and everything that you're supposed to have, the DLT approved, uh, theme up to route forty-two five. As for, uh, a few more done, if it helps all the stuff, everything else. But I was talking to Tyler yesterday out there, uh, got some options. If we don't do the cargo van, then we can keep the truck we currently have.
Question, question.
Right, uh, put a flat bed on it for around, I think you said was thirty-eight hundred, four thousand, put a flat bed on that truck. Probably get another couple of years out of it, then I can drop to a half ton pickup, which would be a little bit, a little bit cheaper than, uh, forty-two five. Which has gotta make a sense to me to do it that way. And just keep running that other truck until she finally just gives the ghost of.
How many miles you got on that one?
It's got, uh, a hundred and thirty-seven.
Oh, hell, that's low.
Yeah, it's just.
It's just the body's rusted.
Yeah.
Been thirty miles on that.
What'd you do to it?
But I, it's a used model works.
Still low mileage, gee.
All in town, I don't, I don't drive a capital. I just go in my ear to the buildings, to buildings, to buildings. To me, it makes sense to put a flat bed on it, we still use it for another three or four years, until the motor builds and the transmission goes. Buy me a half ton, put the boxes on it for my tool storage and stuff, and just go from there. Cargo van, we priced out flat racks and shelving and all that in, the ball kit to make, uh, several of the, several of the dealership buy commercially, you get the. Cargo van, we priced out flat racks and shelving and all that, and ball kit to make, uh, several of the, several of the dealership buy commercially, you get to choose a pack interior package for shelving and stuff like that. Probably won't do that. Uh, backpack blowers, uh, we got one that's almost fifteen years old, is, is done, I've repaired. Like I said, uh, trailer we're currently using is one that Dale had bought. Spreading are gone, the mower we got on an hour is too much weight for it. It's just a little small four by six utility trailer, that's gone. I'd like to get a little bigger trailer, get rid of the walk behind, get rid of the broom we got. And buy a grandstand, that's got the broom attachment for the, our side, new sidewalks, so. That way we also use it front mower and then buy a, a right mower and just take them back over all the way that's currently out there. That, uh, we currently use out to, uh, the health department. Pay out there a year, uh, thirty-five hundred, four thousand. Pay out there for investment, other dress, right now.
Some more now.
More than that, so. One year we don't pay for the mowers, one mower. And that would actually, that would actually, we're, we started at seven thirty in the morning, worked out by noon. So throw an hour, another hour on top of that, to move the health building. We're still on full day. Of course, like I said, uh, got the floor machines, uh, uh, mop there, some garnitures, um, hand mower. Push mowers, uh, one mower, kind of now, seven years old, they go a lot of grass. I like to build a thirty inch, but thirty eight still not. Turn the gear drive on, they're not, probably not, one or two years ago. Uh, we eat here at Sanables, that's about it. I don't know who wants it anymore, it's insane. I'm not sure who, I never saw.
Guys got other questions for Greg?
I don't think so.
You do, come in.
Thanks, Greg.
You wanna call Sierra and...
Yeah, you wanna do Donell since she's not here? Call Sierra and see if she'll come, but we could do Donell.
Donell's not here.
I know, so we can just... Do you wanna do what you've... What she's requested and what you, you wanna give her, or should we just go with your numbers and...
So Donell's trying to rearrange to where she's tomorrow, I think.
Okay.
She got a meeting and stuff, or so?
I think she's on vacation.
Oh, on vacation.
If you don't need me, I'm leaving. Please stay.
We'll wait till you get back over there and call you.
Probably would.
Three hundred thousand, yeah.
Okay, sir.
Yeah, if you brought rock...
Just messing with you, Sheriff.
No, you're not, they're working, they're working, they don't know why.
Hey, I'm not far behind you there, buddy.
Okay.
We run down the block and see who falls down first.
Do we wanna...
That bull and deer start to take off running, we'll chase him.
I appreciate if foot pursuit terminated the same breath.
Cause I know Judy, Judy's here.
Um, yeah, we can try Judy too, Debbie's calling Sierra, telling her to head this way.
Yeah, but in the meantime, we could probably do Judy.
I'm gonna run to use the restroom.
Okay, I'll get another cup of coffee.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I got it, yeah.
Did you bring anything on your desk?
How many you want?
Two, well, one for me, three for both.
Gun takes reliance a lot.
Yeah, I did.
That's our big fundraiser for the year. Something about our peace officers like to have chances to win guns. I need to let them, I need to make sure they win by these times. So that they know it's not Rick or something, so they need to all...
Uh, somebody I know that I hear, I won one time about three years ago.
I thought he was scouting tickets. For high school.
Yeah, the, whatever I guess they had left yesterday, I suppose it's all blind, it's going to two minutes.
Um, she sent an email asking if she could go tomorrow, so I guess we'll combine her with the other core one.
Yeah, Judge Beadham I know is coming now.
Is he coming today or tomorrow? I was gonna say, he's not on the list today.
That was the only other one I thought I'd probably sit around with, Donell.
Yeah.
Everybody else is...
Same old, same old.
He's got all the arms.
I have speech.
Weird wellness thing.
Go, girl.
Thing.
Come back in here. So is those the only three then?
So, hey...
Was Judy coming right in?
On our, like our employees here, can we do like that longevity pay?
You gotta do that for everybody, Sam?
Well, I'm just trying to figure, our, our, our employees...
Nobody got anything that was here more than seven years, two years ago.
Okay.
And everybody else under that got, got money.
I never put that one in.
I just, I'm, I just feel like we, everybody else, oh God, we want merit, we want this, we want that, and then our, our people, you...
I, I have...
You, you just, you just, we, we just figure, oh, we'll keep you the same, and it's like... Uh, I, I'm just... Got everybody, everybody wants merit. Don't say you want merit, nah.
I want merit.
No, no.
Ooh, look at her.
The good stuff.
This one's my favorite.
Is that the peanut butter plank?
No, it's the peppermint.
I like the peanut butter planks that she had last time, I thought those were good, I don't even know where you find those.
Sea salt and caramel, mint, milk chocolate caramel, dark chocolate.
Harry, we'll do Bloody Marys here probably the last day. We're just, we're just jumping around Judy, but I knew you'd be here, so.
I am here, I think I'm gonna be easy for you.
Yeah.
Judy, I need an extra one for Dawn for the minutes, so that's Dawn's, I'll take this one. You wanna share with me, or you wanna make another copy?
It's not here. Especially for you, you're, well, it looks like that's...
Getting there, yeah. Tell Debbie I tried to put on pants with a button this morning, and that didn't go so well. I just consider every day casual Friday.
Well, Judy, I'm sure that's...
I'm fine, yeah.
I'm good, I'm good for that. Are you kidding? That's wonderful.
Yeah.
It will tell you, everything we do as far as preservation on all of our books...
I love those books.
Everything is so expensive, you know, just to, uh, cover them. It's ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, it's, I, I can't believe the expense, but it's crazy.
Well, I mean, that's not a normal sized book.
No.
Those books are, gosh, they're beautiful. When you open them and that, you've got that ink that's faded to brown, and the handwriting is just so beautiful. I, to me, you know, I tell people, I say, if you've got nothing to do for a couple hours, I say, go over there and just pick a date, just, you know, uh...
Alright, let's see who has things.
Cause it really is, it, I mean, it's history, yeah, it's, uh, and going back to eighteen twenty-one, you know.
It is, and you said...
Talking about your birthday?
Yeah, I read in the box when we were on the video.
Talking about your birthday?
We're talking about my car's birthday, now we're... Yeah, come here, Jeff.
Still early.
Son?
Still early.
You know, you should respect your elders.
I do. I give you enough parking. I don't think that...
What page, what page is Judy on?
Okay.
What page?
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Page forty-one.
Do you want me to start with those?
Yeah, if you had any changes from what was in the book, I guess it's, look.
I do not. Shocker. I basically, what, what you're looking at on the top sheet, I basically will get you a printout of collections summary, and this report is from January through November. I believe in December will probably add another fifty to sixty-five thousand dollars. But what I wanted to review and show you is, when you look at the total collections for our office, which is six hundred and six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for this year. What that means to us, because our collections are done, as I mentioned before, like piece by piece, twenty-three dollars, one dollar, you know, three dollars. Uh, that's a lot of revenue we generated this year, especially under the circumstances. Anytime between four hundred and five hundred, it's a busy year. But this year to have that kind of revenue, I think that should say a lot for our office and our work. But it is broken down into the dispersments, and what I also want to point out is you can look and see the total GR fund that we turn over is four hundred and twenty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. So other dispersments go into the county retirement fund, preservation fund, which is the reporters' preservation fund. Uh, the state fund, the computer usage, which is the reporters' tech fund, uh, that's from our website usage. We also pay into state revenues, which is domestic violence, we pay a user fee, which is two dollars, children's trust, and then our marriage licenses are fifty-one dollars, and those funds are broken down also into the different revenues. So that's, that's what the sheet is for, is just to review that with you. And if you go to the second page...
When Jeff gets those marriage...
I had a bet on when the first comment was...
I'll pay, I'll pay for it, just...
Well, we're trying to change the law, so like the third time they adding zero to it, so instead of fifteen, it should be like fifteen hundred.
So fifteen hundred to get married or divorced?
So that fifteen hundred to get married, make sure you wanna do it. Fifteen's too cheap, I may not even mention it in investment, so, you do fifteen hundred and make sure you wanna do it. Divorce is cost a lot more than that. They're worth it.
We had a, well, I mentioned that we had a couple who got married, and he had lied on how many times he had been married, on the application it says, what marriage is this? And he went down second, and I think it was like his fourth or fifth. And she took him to court, and I think she's doing well on that, so, gotta be truthful.
That's the way to start off a marriage, remember lying right away?
Uh, so on the second page, what I also wanted to bring to your attention is, I know that I say it, but I also wanted to prove it, you know, I do try to work, I understand, because Chris is always talking about GR, and I understand the whole concept of the county's revenues. And everybody has their cards and their needs, but I wanted to point out too, that with the reporters' fund, I do try to work with the county on that, I try to supply some of the things we need out of the revenues that we receive in the reporters' fund. Last year, we had a backup drive tape, it just broke one day, and so we needed to replace that, so we paid for that out of the, I paid for that out of the reporters' fund. Also purchased a new server, I paid for that out of the reporters' fund. What we do not have, which I did add, which is probably something new for Kristen, um, I don't remember if I mentioned it to you, Kristen, but we have to buy statue, we have to back up our microphone. And our machine does not do that anymore, so I went back from four years ago to current, and I backed up all of those tapes, and that did cost us an additional twenty-three hundred dollars, and I paid for that. That was not in my budget last year, um, I didn't know that, actually in the past four years I've not backed up, but I paid for that out of the reporters' fund. So that sheet, basically, I just wanted to show that we do try to use a reporters' fund for our needs, but also to help GR. Mostly what I wanna focus on from this year is the capital improvements, so if you turn to page three, number B. I have an employee that has recently a back issue, and our chairs are old, and a lot of the backs are even kind of broken, they're not very stable, so. I do have a chair in the office that Sam brought that I, I will purchase, I will purchase that out of the reporters' fund, that one chair. But going forward, I probably need to get a couple chairs for next year. Um, and the other thing I really need is, we need to get the kitchen sink and cabinet set up. I had it in my budget last year, and I believe that was approved too, but everything started changing in March, so we just never did do anything with that. But we don't have really, our kitchen sink is just an old bathroom sink, and it's got a lot of calcium built up, a lot of rust. It's just difficult for people who come in with their lunch, and they do every day, we just don't have a place to wash dishes, clean things up. And the floors, and they're really, really bad too. So I did add new this year flooring for the kitchen, and I did keep the kitchen sink and cabinet in there, which was from last year's budget. So that is my request this year, is to focus on the capital improvements, section B here.
See, we've got multiple departments wanting chairs and flooring, if we could combine all those. Rather than buying a piecemeal, it would, I don't know if it'd save us any money, but...
I would think it would.
Yeah.
It all depends on the chair that you buy.
Well, it's like when...
Buy a pretty good hundred dollar chair, but five hundred dollar chairs.
We had, uh, some thousand dollar chairs, and I, I emailed, uh, this person who's no longer here, and I said, I wanna see this nine hundred and eighty dollar chair. And boy, she was down immediately, and so that's what I've got in, in my office, has a lifetime guarantee for, for a thousand dollars.
Better redefine print, guarantee it in a lifetime.
Well, this chair she, that she's looking at, it's not leather, and it doesn't have all the bells and whistles, so I'm pretty sure we're only getting nine hundred dollars.
Yeah.
But it still might be close to the five hundred, I don't know, I guess.
I think we got fifty dollar chairs up here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having, I'm having issues with my back, and these chairs are killing me, but...
You just need a stand-up.
I need, I need a nine hundred dollar chair.
You need a stand-up desk.
Yeah.
That you have box and such, you can work at.
I like my stand-up.
Those things are expensive too, though, the desks.
Maybe we oughta...
They're not bad.
With everybody's looking at chairs, maybe we oughta just see if we can do a joint purchase.
You see it for a second?
Same with floors, just bid them all out. I don't know.
Yeah, but we're in the process of...
Might have to get you off my desk.
I have a big picture issue.
I don't have one, sorry.
Organizing, like, all those adventure cars, I mean, it's such a long process to do, because we have to also coordinate them as we remove them. So with a grant, we have almost eight-hundred thousand images that we will put electronically, and that is huge. For our office, though. As far as employees, I've recently had some change.
Yeah.
And with those changes, I, I'm good. Um, but if there's merit, we definitely raise our hands, because we worked all through the pandemic. We worked every day, we were there every day.
I told you not, I told you not to men, I told you not to mention merit. Okay, I'm not...
I'm just saying...
There goes your chairs.
If there's cookies, we want a cookie.
Yeah, there goes your chairs.
I know, I think the title company's been real happy with a lot of the access that they have the stuff now. I think that's where the increases come from, is all the refinances and sales and stuff.
You, yes, you are correct.
Not so much people selling their houses, because the market's been, been stupid low.
The market, the housing market, they are so overpriced right now, it is a seller's...
Supply and demand, there's, there's no supply out there right now, so...
But at large, when all this started, they were panicking because they had about three hundred refis in the hopper. And what happens is, they have so many days by statute to get those completed and brought to our office, and then we have three days to report. And if we were to shut down, all of those people would not have been able to refinance, and that's a big deal, especially when it dropped down to two and a half percent. So we were working.
Yeah.
I did hear on the news, Stan say the reporters' office is open, they're essential, they were there to help, so I'm like, yes.
Well, there are people need, they need their marriage licenses, they need all this other, it, it's...
I don't think twenty-twenty, you should be getting marriage license. I think they take that as a sign and just wait.
I think we should more, because they were concerned, because a lot of the priests and the, they were not performing them, so they were trying to hurry up and bump them up early.
We got a lot we're carrying over till next year, so you should be, you should be, you should be better. I think Jeff's is next year.
I'm sorry?
I think, I think Jeff's is next year.
Nope, I'm gonna just take a vacation instead.
Pretty much, pretty much. Oh.
Two eleven, twenty-ele, twenty-twenty-one, no.
I can't do that, that's my birthday year. Hey, when you turn fifty, you get to have the birthday year and not the birthday. So next year's my birthday year. Catching you, Sam.
You have any other questions?
No, Judy, Judy, run like, run, Judy.
I thought we were done.
Oh, so does that mean yes on the capital improvements, if we're done?
No, we haven't approved anything.
No, we're just, we're going, we're going over...
I will patiently wait this year. Last year, when I heard my budget was approved, um, right after it was approved, I ordered a coffee machine, and Debbie called me, and she's like, "Oh, you can't, that's not how that works." I'm like, "Oh, it was approved," and she's like, "No, not that part, we have another process." I'm like, "I didn't know that," so... I have a list every month, I just, you know, want to get it done, so I will wait.
Okay.
I'm good.
Thanks, though.
Thanks, Judy.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Judy.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sierra.
Sierra.
She is on page eighty-five.
Thanks for sending us that information. Sierra.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I definitely have no idea how this works.
Um, if you have changes from what I've submitted, uh, now's the time to talk about them, or ask about them, or, um, anything like that, if there's any changes that you want to see from what I proposed.
I know that I had emailed you guys a couple, I guess, weeks, like, three weeks ago, in regards to potentially using Kira's i40 to hire around a part-time assistant, and then that's when I came to the realization that that money ends December thirty-first, until January twenty-first. EMPG, which covers half of my salary and supplies and some of the equipment maintenance, that was extended out until, I would say, May thirty-first, so I can't make any adjustments to that until after then. So even though I wanted to go ahead and ask again for more help and assistance, I think maybe it'd be better for you guys or the county as a whole financially, in regards to record, even if I just wait until the next go-around of EMPG, that way I can go ahead and include an assistant in there, that way I wouldn't be asking for half the amount it would take to support that position. So as it says right now, how Kristen answered down, I can respond to that.
I don't have any questions.
I know Brian had some stuff in capital for the MEOC, but he was saying maybe RSOC funds would help pay for that. So you think that'll, think that's possible, or?
Yes, sure, yeah. Well, there was a surplus on our compliance this year, which is due in the back, and we weren't able to leave the office to go to meetings and conferences and things of that nature. A lot of the training was in CEP, we, well, that was all Zoom, so there wasn't any travel costs in her, and it's uncertain what happens next year, so whatever she cuts out, we'll be seeing lines.
Is there any way to get some more SEMA or FEMA grant funds to help pay for, I know you talked about Tracy, uh, you know, trying to be like a deputy director or whatever, but, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of other counties that are slightly larger than us, but have multiple employees, and I think you pointed that out, but like Columbia has probably ten employees in emergency management or...
That's correct. And the one that I found that was close to us, even though they're, I believe, population is slightly smaller, is Johnson County, and I believe they have six full-time. And the thing, when it comes to Tracy, initially, whenever I came on payment, because she is attached to our EMPG, so the state does cover our funding as well, I was under the impression that she was under the department rather than under the commission, but, and I don't know if that's in my wheelhouse to ask for her, any type of raise or not, but the city service center was hiring somebody in a similar position at seventeen bucks an hour, and I believe that Tracy's twelve dollars an hour, and she's been with us for a long time, so if that's something that, like I said, I don't know if that's in my jurisdiction, for lack of better words, or if that's something that may need somebody else to do it too, but I think in order for retention, it would be probably in the county's best interest to try to get her more living wage before she goes somewhere else, because that's a lot of knowledge and a lot of experience in her position, and if we lost her, it'd be really hard to train somebody else to do it.
Is there more funding available through SEMA or FEMA for additional employees in emergency management or not?
Well, the EMPG is what we used to pay half of it.
Right. But I think it was a half-time position at one time.
We had a manager half, a half.
Huh?
She was working for us scanning, so they were only doing half a half. Even in that grant, there's a top dollar amount, right? So they can't ever go over that, no matter if they have fifty percent or whatever, still, there's a top dollar. We never, we would get to that top dollar before we'd add all of that in, if that makes sense.
See, so we're topped out?
Yes.
Right now, most of the time, our expense is sixteen, what that's covering.
So I guess all the other counties are just eating the added cost?
I, the ones that I spoke to, they do use the EMPG's match fifty percent, but outside of that, I guess they take that for their full responsibility of that employees. And honestly, Chris, I don't think that there is any other, like, income supplement or wage supplement programs through FEMA or SEMA, except that.
Just asking.
Have any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
You didn't have any capital requests, uh, does all her capital go through RSOC typically, or?
I don't, I did not get a separate capital or what. Um, a lot of her equipment does go through there, and then, uh, like you said, some of it's on Ryan's list, so if RSOC doesn't cover it, it's on his list at the moment, because most of it has to do with their computer equipment and things in the trunk. And you have equipment that you wouldn't...
Equipment, desk, computers, any of that stuff, okay.
Good?
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, thanks again for the information. Okay, well...
Esther's coming?
It's only the third, here, yeah.
You cannot come early. I can do mine if you'd like.
Yeah, let's do yours, and let's keep moving.
I think I'm on there, one twenty-two.
Have we called Chris?
Thirty-seven in the book.
So Donell's not coming, I guess?
She's coming tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
We're gonna fit her in, right, with the courts.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Well, I'll just start, one twenty-two is under you guys, it's, uh, basically the people within this office here. As you know, we had asked for an HR manager within the budget. I'll just give you a little statistics, um, the county in two thousand and seven, we had four, two hundred and fourteen employees full-time. What's proposed in the budget for two thousand twenty-one is three hundred and thirty-seven. So we have grown tremendously. Um, you know, we added the jail, or we moved to a new facility in two thousand and eight, we added about forty-four employees there. We took over EMS. Um, so by the time two thousand and eight came, and at the end of two thousand and one, we were gonna take over the EMS, you guys gave me a second person in that office, because I was working nights, weekends, couldn't keep up. So we got a new person in there. And in two thousand and nine, you guys seen that we needed a purchasing agent to share county-wide, so then that purchasing agent came on, and that program is doing wonderful here. In two thousand twenty now, we've added two hundred and thirty-five election workers to our payroll system, to even do those four payrolls this year. Uh, we have a turnover rate here, about fifteen employees a month, in, out, so that's a lot of work that goes on with that. We currently have, we currently work nights, weekends, just to keep up. Um, over the years, good common sense has made it through with a few attorney's opinions on HR issues. But it's become apparent that the county has grown so much, and we should act like a first-class county and have an HR department. I mean, you talked about Columbia and the EMS department, Columbia has four people in their HR department. First, um, I see this HR position getting our employee manual done. Legally done, binding out to employees, employees sign off on it, we're ready to go. Job descriptions, we need a consolidated place where all the job descriptions are at. Not each department have their own, we need one. We need a check for exempt, not exempt, we need that all done. The countywide pay grid, you know that's a big issue, uh, we need that done, and we need to budget by positions. You know, we need to try to have camaraderie around the whole county, consistency. We need recruitment, you need recruitment county-wide. Um, I see that person doing that, I see that person keeping up with the county website for all jobs available. And job fares for the county-wide. They go, helping me and learning from me and negotiating with vendors for our benefits. We need, we need somebody else to know that. Keeping up with FMLA requirements, keeping up with the workers' comp, new requirements, keeping up with the drug testing and alcohol programs here. I do my best on all of those things, but I feel like I am not doing any of them any justice, because I am stretched too far. Uh, I, but I do my best. Training of elected officials, department heads, the do's and don'ts of hiring. I still see department heads and elected officials doing their own hiring, but eventually, this HR position is going into that. You know, um, training courses for all new employees, sexual harassment, and any of the required training that needs to be done. Keeping up with background tests, uh, new employees, physical test, I mean, we keep charge of the physical test and the drug testing and that, but to do a better job at that county-wide. I would like to set up a committee, if you guys do put this position in the budget, committee to help with the expectations of this position. Those were just a few on the list that I, that I could think of that would really help. And the recruitment of this person, the pay range for this position, and, and try to make the county more efficient that way. I don't think we're, we're not advancing at all, we're basically staying still and hoping everything works out. I, I would suggest we hire that position, and now what the county commission looks like from there. You know, if you guys, obviously, you're the decision-makers, if you want, like, a county manager, controller, finance, and then have the HR, the attorney, the purchasing manager, and then I'd like to change one of my senior financial titles to an HR specialist. But just coming up with an org chart of where you see this office going. We're not only here to help you guys, we're here to help the whole county. We help every department, we just don't do just the county commission business. All the employees in the office, um, do not just, like I said, do not just do that, do not just do the county's business, but, or the commission's business, but we do the county. Okay. Hang with me.
Deep breath.
Sorry. I get very passionate, because it is, it's a lot of work, and...
Well, we've been talking about that for several years, too.
Well, in the HR position, I want you to know, will not eliminate much work from us here, it really doesn't. It, those items that I listed are things that need to be done. Uh, I don't want this person to be doing the hiring and firing for different departments yet. I want them to be, um, consulted for those departments. These departments have already got their people that do that, they have their committees, they have their groups that they do their hiring. I just want this person to help that, make that easier for them, make sure they're doing the right things. Make sure our applications on the website meet all the requirements, you know. So, and again, my background, it was not HR, it's accounting, but, you know, we, we've been able to muddle through till now, I think it's time. Again, I just want to talk about now the people within this office. I think the people within this office has, and to my detriment, we follow the rules. We ask for increases at pay period, at time, uh, at budget time. We follow the rules, and we come in here, and we don't say, okay, somebody left, so now we're gonna give all that money to somebody else. We've never done that, we don't, we don't, we follow those rules. But in doing that, the county commission just approved a position at our public works department for a financial assistant, at four thousand dollars more than my current senior financial assistant that's been here ten years. So I think my people are just as valuable as any other department's people, and we work again for the whole county. And we have a clerk was just hired in another position at thirty-four-five. I have a person who's been here twelve years, making less than thirty-four-five, and at the same type of position, if you ask me, same type of duties. The county commission also approved a position at the public administrator's office, uh, for twenty-eight thousand, with no experience with the county. And now I'm speaking about the one that Sierra was just speaking about. She's been here, um, five years, and she's only making twenty-seven thousand eight hundred. I think it's time to take care of our own people. Our people are just as valuable here that work for you guys as they are for other departments. Um, so I'm asking for, for those to be increased. It's not all about keeping up with the other departments with their wage, it's giving them the value of the job they're doing. And I do think they do a good job and they're very loyal, they stay here, and so I'm asking for them at this time. Do you guys have any questions about either positions? And I probably will be coming back at some point for more help, depending on how this HR person works and if she's just doing these kind of duties and, and the day-to-day activities. When we went from monthly to every two weeks pay, our job doubled. And I, I didn't ask for any more people then, but I'll just be quiet now.
Yeah, we're putting a lot on you, although you, you haven't been up here on Sundays lately.
Nope, coming up this weekend, I'm sure after this week.
You don't have to be.
But, you know, when you retire in ten years, it's gonna take three people to do your job in ten years.
I don't think you'll find, not in today's market, nobody's gonna.
Ten years went right back, good.
It's not, no, no, ten years here. And to me, it's a transitional. I want to have somebody else know what I know. And, you know, I've been here thirty years, so it, it's hard to spit out everything when you do some stuff once a year.
So another ten years, forty years.
No, no. I wanted this to be a transitional part, so whether when I leave, you don't think you need a manager, but guys, when you guys are not here, there's a lot that goes on that I handle, whether you agree with it or not, but there is a lot, you know, so. We just, we keep the county running, so. I come to you with big questions, but.
I think we need an HR person. And I think if we've got three hundred and thirty-seven full-time, how many part-time?
Hundred, they're not all active working, probably sixty actively work.
You gonna build our bill some of the duties?
These are really, I mean, these duties that I had mentioned that this person would do, I tried.
There's a lot of HR stuff that you do that you're gonna have to turn over to an HR person if, or HR person's stuff. You know what I'm talking about, because you're a mother hen, you like to do it all.
I gotta turn, I know.
So you're gonna have to be willing to turn some of it over.
And that's why these people are coming in less, because I think, oh, I'll just take it on, I'll just do it, I'll just do it. You know, if something new comes up, I'll just do it, instead of giving it to somebody else.
You gotta be willing to turn some of that over.
I know, I am. It's either that or have a nervous breakdown.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got a drawer in there if you have one of those, we'll get you a swing. There's an emergency drawer in there, so.
Well, I can tell you, back in two thousand and eight, I came in here crying all the time because I couldn't take it, because I was working nights, weekends, and that's when they put Betsy back there with me. Honest. And that's what's gonna happen to you. And I am very loyal to the county.
Now, I would like to give our employees more because I, we do. I, I see this, you know, like elected officials have come before us and, and we're starting new hires out, more than what, it's just, it's.
And it's very hard to keep up morale when that happens.
Yeah.
So what's your feelings about HR?
I'll see where we're at with the numbers before I'm gonna be adding people and, as you say, take, take care of our people that we had. We gotta step around, take care of people we had before we're gonna hire more people, so.
That would be great if that was across.
But if we've got, if we've got roughly four hundred employees full and part-time.
We just had to step A-TART last year to try to even things out and, excuse my language, but that's more screwed up than a soup sandwich.
Yeah, that only benefited people that were here seven years or left, so the people that were here longer, and that's what the problem is.
No, I'm not even talking about that. So we, so people that may be here for twelve years, you know, more than the seven-year people, it didn't quite get as much, but it did, it did try to bring everybody into.
It only fixed the starting salary, and then it only adjusted it on the seven years.
It didn't even fix starting salaries because when somebody leaves, the other elected officials send their pay for them in and whatever money they wanna put on it, they can put on it, so.
Right, it went out the window.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly. So, I, I mean, you went through a lot of work for that and it lasted all of two weeks.
And I really think this HR person is just as important as our purchasing person, person was when we first hired that. That was a good fit and, and relatively, all departments, all elected officials have bought into it. And they know that it's better to let her handle purchasing stuff than them going out and getting their own. So that has worked and I think in HR, the right HR person can help all the elected officials and department heads buy into it. And if we only budget by position and we don't budget by actual, that could stop some of this. But that, a good person in that position.
It's not going to, because when they have somebody quit, they're still gonna hire them to have whatever that person left at.
But then the commission next year only budgets it for that position.
So then you're gonna have to tell that person they get a pay cut?
You're gonna have to tell that elected official to fix it. This is what it is.
I, I, we've been through this every year and we've never been able to find a way to fix it. I agree. I'd like to be able to say, okay, you wanna do it this year because you have it in your budget? That's fine, but come January one, somebody's getting a pay cut or what you can't do, you can't cut their pay cut.
That's our only.
Through the budget is really the only way you can control it. Because once their budget for the year is approved, they have that amount of budget.
Well, we can't cut their.
But when you approve their budget for the next year, you could say it's not there, but again, you have to take that.
So if they start them at thirty-four-five instead of thirty-two-five, then for the rest of the year, they get their thirty-four-five and they come January one, we say, well, we're cutting your budget that two thousand because you paid them more than the starting wage.
And, you know, if we had a system in place with this.
No, I'm asking, can we do that? I don't think we can.
Oh, I think you can. Yeah, you've got their budget the next year.
No, how you gonna cut their budget and they have to cut somebody's pay then?
They brought them in at the wrong rate.
We're the one signing the pay for them, so we're just guilty then.
I think you could have a disclaimer on the bottom that says. This, this not appropriate.
I'm willing to work with anything because like I said, we've done this every year.
But I think if we have the right HR person and she, they, he or she comes up with a plan as to, okay, you got a really experienced person coming in like you wanted to do, you have a really experienced person, well, we, we can do two thousand more than the bottom of, of the beginning of the pay. If there's a system in place that, that has some flexibility, I think there'd be more buy-in. Well, that's all of our elected officials? No. Well, the majority of them, yes. I think the majority of them want a standard, they want everybody to follow the same standard. But when they see other people coming in here and getting stuff, they're coming in too.
Right.
And this does not stop.
I know, I know, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm preaching.
No, it's.
That's almost a separate issue from the HR person. I mean, I agree that it would maybe help, but I mean, until you can, until you can stop the, the process of them being able to use whatever they have remaining in their budget to hire at this rate when they should be hiring at this rate. I mean, yeah, I mean, we, we talked to someone about that earlier and, and, yeah, I mean, yeah, you cut their budget or you tell them, well, they're not, you're not getting any capital, you, you could do a lot of stuff, but, but that doesn't work very well with trying to give somebody a decrease in their salary.
Well, it doesn't work across the board either because there's different offices that, different funds that.
I mean, I'm, I've all, I've been for an HR person for the last couple of years, so, I mean, I, I think that it's, it's way past time to get that done, get us in compliance and, you know, we thought we were on the right track with, you know, hiring somebody as a consultant or whatever and that kinda had its problems and issues and, but we just, we gotta get it done.
I think we're big enough. I mean, we're, we're way past, you know, trying to keep up with good common sense here because it's, we got all kinds of employment issues and we have such a diverse group of employees that we need, we need help.
We keep growing and those accounting things and payroll things keep growing and you're gonna have to have the staff and the people to keep growing with it.
And we have different rules that we do with different departments, you know, now. I see that probably getting worse in the future, so. Okay, so I'm gonna leave that for HR and take care of my own people here, our own people.
So what are we gonna have on tomorrow's? Both elected officials.
No, we're waiting on, waiting on Jordan. Sunshine.
We got Donnie, Steve Korsmeyer, Matt, Ralph Jobe.
So then we have all the presentation stuff tomorrow. And then when do we sit down and start?
The fourteenth. I mean, we can talk about other stuff now if you have, I mean, most people that come in haven't had a lot of changes. Do you guys have changes you wanna make to any of the departments that you've heard from already?
I didn't say anything, yeah, I doubt as far as what, if, what any differences that you had or that they had or.
So there are a few things that have come up since I submitted the budget that I have to fix on the payroll side, some of the changes in two-eleven that happened after Larry brought up his three thousand that I had missed, so I need to plug that in. I made a mistake with the lockers amount in the prosecutor's office, I need to correct. And then there's a discrepancy in the total amount that we budgeted per person for health, dental and life. I think now's the time to fix it, so it's a twenty dollar per person adjustment that I'm going to update.
For the year.
I think that dental and life increased last year and we didn't increase our total dollar number. I think it's better to fix it now than to wait to do adjustments at the end of the year, so. I'm gonna fix all of that in the salary spreadsheet and update your guys' numbers to be actual on those changes so far.
You've got tomorrow, you've got health insurance fund, do we wanna do that now? Can we, can we call Chris and see if Chris can come earlier?
He said he won't come earlier. I don't know that you, since you posted tomorrow's agenda, I don't know that you can really talk about the ones for tomorrow yet. We can go back and talk about any of the ones we've already talked to and we can go through any of the small, we went through most of the smaller ones yesterday afternoon, unless there's something you want to see. We can look at EMS sales tax if you wanted, because it's not really tied to a particular person. We can look at capital improvement, sales tax if your question's in there.
So capital improvement, sales tax, you're talking about trying to pick and choose some projects or?
I think, I think that there's some things in the list that we could possibly do now. Our sales tax this year has turned out better than we expected it to. In March, obviously, we thought it was going to take a downturn because COVID.
I didn't.
I didn't.
I did, just wait.
You don't mean stag at least.
Wait till we're gonna get, you can't taste it.
Yeah, it might be coming.
You can't taste it.
Yes, I still think it could, but I think that there, there's some money there that we could spend if we wanted to knock some of the smaller things off of the list or some things that we had on the list from this year.
That may slow some down, but right now, a lot of the refinancing, people refinancing and doing some work, they were just stopping this morning. Somebody about that, refinancing their houses because they've got such low rates and then they're getting some extra money and doing work on their houses and stuff, so.
We are.
So if the rates stay down, I mean, this could go for a while, but.
But I know there are some things like Judy's kitchen project and I know some of the things on Greg's equipment list are things that we had on the capital list this year that we kinda put on hold. So I think we could do some of those things if we wanted to now to take them off of the list for next year.
You got pringer center floor, you got Judy floor.
Those are the only two, right, so far?
That's what I'm trying to think of.
But that's what we just need to have a list of and then go take a look and.
But if you do both of those at the same time, and then again, Eric Peters wanted chairs, Judy wants chairs, we have anybody else?
We don't really have to pick and choose right now. You know, we can do this again, you put us, we want some amount in there for capital. I don't wanna put it off too long. We come back in January or whatever after the budget's approved and say, you can have this, you can have this, you can have this, or find out what your big project is gonna be that you wanna do next year.
Eric's chairs.
I mean.
I thought we were talking about spending something now versus carrying it forward.
If we wanted to do some of the smaller things, we possibly could and, I mean, it obviously will change that carry-forward number for next year, but.
Are those, are those floor machines that Greg talked about, are those on cooperative or?
They might be, I don't know that we've looked into that. They were on his list last year, too.
I don't know, I don't know which one's more pressing, but I mean, some of those might come in under the bid limits, but.
Well, and like he has some things like, you know, his backpack mower, mower and hand tools and we need, I mean, some of those things obviously would be under the bid limit. You could purchase some of that and get it off of the list and make it the list for the bigger projects.
You got insulation at pringer center, a new solid core door.
Yeah, but a lot of that stuff, you're just not gonna be able to get somebody to probably get it done.
Well, and, and maybe it's the fact that we want to pick a couple of the larger projects and start the bidding process so that next year they can move forward. Maybe that's where we're at. Maybe we don't wanna spend anything at the moment, but we want to determine what those are and have just to start working on it so that we can move next year a little faster, I don't know. I think we really need to possibly tackle what that long-term plan is for Adams or the whole jail or maybe that's just having someone come in and help us figure out what the right future looks like and what project needs to be tackled first or what the options are as far as moving people around if we wanted to. I know we are running out of space in places. If you had an HR person, where are we putting them? So I think there are some space issues that are going to have to be addressed in the next couple of years. Maybe now's the time to see what that plan looks like as far as moving people around.
She's right, the HR, you know, they're gonna have to stay close to us for a while, so there's an issue there.
So we need to decide that we wanna spend money fixing up Adams, do we want to tear down the jail and, and put on that addition there?
I think you got two different things there because the, the old jail's gonna be something that's gonna be more related to the courts and getting them a decent courtroom where they can have enough jurors in there to do jur selection. I think that's a big project for that. The Adams Street project I see is totally different and being more of a, it's in the footprint of downtown area and for county offices to be in there, so. Because I don't think the courts wanted to move over here. If we moved commission meetings over there to Adams, I don't even think they wanted to move here because they'd have to duplicate their services of security and, and marshals, so. I thought it was kind of an easy fix if we wanted to do that, but didn't sound like it. But I think Adams Street would be kind of a, a low-hanging fruit to get something fixed there and it's, space has absolutely been wasted right now.
Well, and I think if you view that, you need to have somebody tell you what the options are with this building if you move people around. Cause I think the HVAC in this building's kind of waiting depending on if you're going to change the footprint in this building before we do that HVAC. And that's one that I think is costing us more money than it should be, uh, heating and cooling this building. So we've been pushing that onto the back burner until we make sure that the footprint of this one is what we want it to be before we update that HVAC system. So if you can figure out where the moving parts are going to land, I think that's one that needs to be a priority.
We just need to draw something up that we all agree on, and that's the thing is there are a million different options on how to do it and where to move it to, so.
Uh, I think you need to think about which, which offices work best together and then try and see if you can fit those groups into one building or the other.
When she means, she means actually, yeah, we have to be talking to them every day, we have to walk to a different building.
Well, and the collector, a lot of times people come in to pay money and they need something from the assessor's office.
So ease of use for the public and ease of use for the employees. So, you know, you don't wanna move me to the health department and me to be here because we literally talk to each other every day and are passing things back and forth, that doesn't make sense. Uh, collector, assessor, recorder, usually if you're seeing one of those people, you could possibly be seeing the other two.
And I see those more as a courthouse-related thing, so if people come to the courthouse to look for, hey, I need to find out where to pay my taxes, where to get some information about my taxes or record something, I'm going to the courthouse. So, they're right here, they're at the annex to courthouse, uh, you know, they come up, some people come up to try to find us, but most time they call or whatever.
I mean, I think the.
Commission, auditor, kinda same way.
Well, I think the financial envelope, so treasurer, purchasing agent, HR person, finance, you know, our group of people that all deal with financial stuff. Usually the employees from outside are coming to see us, so to have us kind of centrally located to where it's one spot, hey, I can drop off my money to the treasurer, I can drop off my pay forms to the finance office, you know. Yeah, it's centrally located that way, obviously you have to stay fairly close to the clerk's office as well.
We just think this is a big financial investment, county money, that I think it wouldn't hurt if somebody from the outside end to look at our facilities, see what we have. And you gotta share with them the plans that you see, what you want to see in the future, and they come up with options for you. That's what they, you know, that's their profession, that's what they do. That may be into next year, so maybe you just wanna approve some, some little stuff now, you know, get some of this little stuff out of the way.
No, I don't think I'm disagreeing with you at all, but you're talking about being an architect and, and draw it up. But they're gonna ask us the same stuff that I'm saying we need to decide what we wanna do and what you just said we need to do. It needs to be put together and where, so.
And it might actually be better for us to go over there and.
That's kinda the way I see it.
The clerk and then you could actually take this space and just make it a big, I don't know how many, what, supporting walls, but make it so that when they do jury selection or something like that, even though it's, it's separate from that, you've got a big.
Well, and I know someone brought up at one point the possibility of something between the buildings.
A big space. That's, Donnie had that, which I.
Elevators that went both sides.
And bathrooms.
One central entrance, you do one set of security, but you could go to either building and go up and down the floors even though they don't meet, I don't know, and add bathrooms or something.
That was Donnie, and even a new elevator.
And if at that point you decide to re- remodel the courthouse, the plumbing, the electrical, the whatever, all the piping, if that involves going to the public for a, a bond issue, that's what it has to be, you know. Cause when you talk over there and you talk about replacing all that, I don't know how a five-year, fifteen-year cent would ever help us there.
No.
Yeah, so it's definitely a long-range plan, and long-range to counties is five years, I'm sorry.
I think we probably do need to bring in somebody who can look at all of our buildings and tell us what is the, if, if we use Adams, what are the best offices to put over there? If you put the recorder and the assessor and the collector over there, so they're all together, if you put us and Kristen and, um, I don't know what other offices.
You could have several, could ask several companies to give you some type of comprehensive plan as to what they think would be the best solution for, you know.
And even a treasurer, the more we can move out of, we can move out of the courthouse, the more space we're giving them. Um, I know Eric doesn't wanna move, but, you know, what, what you wanna do and what you don't wanna do, and even the public administrator, um, of course, they work with the courts, but, um.
What you guys wanna think about that, uh, we'd be willing to, you know, get some kind of proposal out and, uh, but there definitely's gonna be involvement from you guys as to have it.
Which way do you wanna work at this firm though, do you wanna decide where we want people and then we hire somebody to come in and, here's what we wanna do? Or do you wanna say, we have six million dollars to work with and make it work within those parameters?
So just, just my thoughts, I mean, I don't, I don't have any input in it, I mean, your guys' decision, but, well, I mean, for now, but, anyway. I would, I would like to see three architectural firms or whatever that is come in and say, show us the plan. And then work within a, you know, I wouldn't tell them how much money you got because maybe the plan is a lot more than what you want, maybe it's less, I don't know. But I mean, you got, you got multiple issues, you got an old jail that's falling down, you got an Adams Street property that's here, you got this building. And obviously we could better, function better if our offices were laid out better. I mean, that's all they need to know, here's, here's our assets, here's what we need to do, give us some kind of a plan and then let them figure it out.
And if we have to go to phase one, that we can afford, and then we go to phase two, you know, that, at least you're getting to where you wanna ultimately be.
You could phase it, I mean, you know, the jail may not have to come down right now, but I mean, there's challenges there with the Sally Port and different things there too.
Yeah, it might be you just take it down and not do anything with that, for the time being, you got more parking than, um.
But that, that way it lets creative people be creative in how they go about doing it.
Not really giving them restrictions for the get-go.
Right, but it also gives you some options, I mean, rather than just dealing with, with one individual or one firm, you know, maybe you find two or three firms and, and you say.
But we need a, we need a clean function, it's kinda like Blair Oak spending twenty million dollars on a new high school. And then public schools spending a hundred and thirty million dollars on a high school and redoing the other high school. Yeah, we need the twenty million dollar, we need a good, efficient, clean, workable building, we don't need all the whistles and bells. Uh, we don't need, you know, mahogany from the Amazon and all this other stuff. We don't need gold fixtures for set lighting.
Yeah, we don't even need doors to leave it open.
Sliders. Yeah, shower curtains, hey, it works for the court, it works for the courts.
So, I mean, I'm, I don't have a problem with giving them, uh, freedom to think outside the box, I think we still have to give them some kind of parameters and say,
Yeah.
If we can come to an agreement on what we want where, kinda what I envision though is that something happens at Adams and then whoever moves out of their place is in Adams, so it frees up to where you can do work in that area. Cause the courts are gonna have, still have to have some way to function, and I, I kinda see that as going like one floor at a time, cause I think you're gonna have to do HVAC, plumbing.
Yeah, that's probably a teardown, Adams, I mean, that's the way I see it, I mean, there ain't that much there to save, I mean, I think you'd be better off to tear it down and start over.
That's a historic building.
Sorry.
That was an A and P store back, probably going back to the thirties.
I mean.
That thing's almost a hundred years old, give it, give it ten years.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Sure, I, I like Chris's idea, uh, I think if we looked around at neighboring counties, uh, someone like us.
Right.
Uh, if you've been to the county courthouse lately, I think he's one of the counties that's been filed. Uh, it's quite spectacular how they added on to that old courthouse to say that, and it still function, you know, they're tremendous growth up there. But I bet you some of these architects have been to some similar counties and faced the same issues, this is, we're facing it for the first time, they've done, they, they've solved this problem four, five, or six times probably, uh.
Right.
And, uh, and you worth it to start with a group of three and narrow it down to one if you kinda like and build it. We've got so many tentacles and we're so used to it, we've got the old jail to get up and be something good.
Health department.
I'm afraid one of these days somebody in the courtroom on the third floor is, is gonna have a big one, you know, the cardiac, and they're gonna have to stand up that stretcher meter up and that person up or down.
Right.
Uh, we're so far behind on, on ADA, I guess, that, in that building, but it's, I gotta say, it's a spectacular building.
Turn the jail down and redoing that and getting all the layers to line up would have also added a ADA access, so.
That might be a real interest to the complex.
It would've been ADA, so that would've helped out with that, and I forgot about the health department building too, so.
Yeah, we still, well, we've got, we, we need to list the health department, because we need to give it to a Realtor and let them sell it.
Yeah, it's like Harry said, I mean, there's been a lot of counties that have built a government facility next to the courthouse or whatever.
We didn't have a MAG conference this year, we could've talked to five, six of them down there.
Right, but I mean, and, and those government buildings have been pretty nice buildings that they put in and, but I mean, it's kinda like, you gotta plan for now and the future. Cause you are, you are gonna grow, I mean, so you gotta have some extra space.
Compared to where we were thirteen years ago to where we are now, I don't expect taking off, picking on any EMS department ever again or, you know, the jail being any bigger, but, harmfully so.
It's kinda like a school, you know, I mean, obviously, it'd be a lot easier to just add a floor if it was built that way than it would be to, you know, try to find more space where you're at. I mean, and you're in downtown where it's not easy to find, so.
Well, maybe that would be good, if you guys could reach out to any of these other counties that have done this or been there, that they could help be on the selection group with us or, or, you know, help us to work with this.
And it might be there's a specialist you bring in, it's not an architect, but it's a planner who goes and looks at all of our buildings, you know, public works and health and, and then makes a recommendation. And then you bring in the architect, um, and say, okay, here's, here's, uh, because we do, what, we have eight buildings now. And we, we probably do need to list the health department and the old health department and, uh, get rid of that and then start looking at.
Okay, well, you just let us know, and if you wanna wait till after the first of the year, we got Jessica, she can go out and try to find however you wanna do it. If you wanna do a needs assessment first, if we wanna do an RFQ, if you wanna get this committee with other people that have done this and fill them out before you can do anything, you just let us know, we're here to help you. But Jessica can get the RFQ to go up there.
It was December, so I don't think we, I don't think we get anything done more this year unless we wanna list the old health department.
Unless there's parameters that you want to try to come up with that you're going to give them, like if you want to figure out where to put into a certain department currently and how they have to fit people together.
But then again, maybe a strategic planner as opposed to an architect is, is who we need, because an architect's gonna look at that building, they're gonna look at, and, you know, it, it might be easier just to tear down that building, I mean, it's, and just build a new, uh.
With the investment you're gonna make doing this, so that makes those, where it's gonna be, where do you think your department's gonna be in ten years?
You'll still be here, so you can, you can tell the presiding commissioner then.
So, okay, well, do you wanna go over any of the other capital? Think you wanna go over any other capital that you wanna prove or you wanna go through?
I said you probably should've had her stay and see if there's something you wanna bid.
You guys wanna talk about capital, these little things that Greg?
We can.
So what is our next, not till eleven?
Eleven thirty, so.
No.
Yeah, don't know, eleven.
What worked, some of these capital items in this year's budget?
She's coming tomorrow.
So, I mean, they were, so I guess we just have.
We didn't really approve.
We didn't approve them though, they were just kind of a wish list.
Yeah. So, I mean, if I can go pull last year's budget up and look at the list, if there's things on there that are still on the list, maybe, I don't know. Or, you know, if you wanna wait out for the rest of the year and we're close enough to the end of the year now, if you don't want to.
Or we could say, Greg, you get twenty-five thousand, get some of these little things off the list. And unless there's something that you absolutely don't approve of, that he needs. And let him do the part.
Did we bid something on the health department that we decided not to move forward, he did like the outside of painting or stuff? Is there a project that we bid that we?
I don't think we did, I don't think we did the painting.
Or we did inside.
There was something I thought we bid and it was like in March when it came back and we decided just to put it on hold, but I don't remember what, whether it was.
I think the painting was like sixty thousand, but he's got a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so he's doing, he's doing more than just painting.
That'd have to be exterior, cause interior's a pretty good shape.
Yeah, exterior, yeah.
I mean, it's got a new roof on it, and I thought, I thought you said that we had had new siding put on it, so I don't know what, uh, I don't know what, surely the siding wasn't being painted already.
Well, we did the part that, around the window, so it was, uh.
Yeah, that's what's on the list, painting and exterior repair is what you have on there.
Maybe that's new siding or something, I don't know.
I thought you said the siding was fine, but it needed to.
Sofits and.
Screwed or nailed or, however they attach it or popping out, I don't know.
Hundred and twenty thousand is like a lot.
Yeah.
I'm gonna let you know, we tried to get the remaining part of the loose project back, so we had to check, uh, split for sixty thousand, so, on that.
Oh, they're.
You know, they hold that until they actually get the roof done, I don't remember.
Did we take the final payment on HVAC that?
Go forward. Thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars, I gave it to them, so.
Well, I think I settled a payment, I just missed out on the last one or nothing.
That they're done.
Do you have something else you wanna talk about, you wanna take a break until eleven thirty?
Might as well take a break till eleven thirty, if there's something you wanna knock out.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, if we, if we can't, if we can't do tomorrow, so.
I don't really have anything.
Yeah, I don't think you need a desk, I think a card table and a folding chair.
Hey Sam, if you give me a person, I will make a card table and a folding chair.
I, I think.
Jeff could probably build a desk out, a couple, two or four.
Crates, crates.
I will build a desk out of flagrants, two headboards, if that's what it takes.
But she wants a five hundred dollar chair.
Yeah, I'm getting tired of chairs.
They, I'll sit on a folding chair and they can have mine, I don't care.
Speaking of that, I don't get, Nolly needs chairs, she sits down and goes down, and so then she had them come in, this is how tight our people are, she had them come in and put a new thing in, so it's working.
Yeah.
Well, Judy wants chairs. Well, Judy wants chairs, Eric wants chairs, let's, let's, uh.
I think we should have a standardized chair that.
Yeah, what did Eric want for, or, or two, two styles they can choose from.
Three or four that they can choose from.
You know, it, yeah, yeah, and just say.
Well, he wanted, did he, I think he wanted both, he wanted stationary chairs and, he wanted.
Yeah, he does.
I get that, but I mean, maybe this is standard, you know, a couple color options or a couple options.
I don't think we should have some kind of like, hey, here's two options for a rolling chair and here's two options for stationary chairs.
If you want stationary, Dr. Cameron has a whole bunch in his basement when he closed his office there from his waiting room. And I bought some for my store at fifty bucks a chair and they're damn nice chairs. So, I, I can get you, I can get Eric three chairs for a hundred and fifty bucks that are like new.
I think they want to kind of go in recess until eleven thirty, till the next budget.
Okay.
Poor, poor Chris, I mean, look at this.
That's right.
Look at this, look at this.
That was just.
Talk about, talk about.
To protect the wall.
Harry, that's where you inherit.
I'm just affected good for you.
What's your chair in your office look like? Look at the one in my office, that's still that same green one that Pee Wee, Pee Wee probably used that all.
Do you want a, do you want a five hundred dollar chair? We can probably get one that massages and everything.
That one is a store, cause Pee Wee was in.
We can get one that massages, he's, he's getting better.
Was he, so, was he in another accident?
No, but he had, uh.
Did you get?
I don't think so.
Oh, no, you're not.
I may be staying at recess till eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty, second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, take us off. Okay, we will go back into open session. Okay, what page are we on?
Page ninety-six.
Ninety-six, in the book.
Thanks, Don.
Print is getting smaller, in my eyes, you're getting worse.
It's, it's really small this year, hopefully the next one will be a little bigger.
Good, so I put my eyes.
So, can we discuss differently what Kristen has proposed?
Uh, I was just gonna take a quick look over this. When I sent the budget over, I, I spoke to Jeff briefly, I didn't know what type of, if you are looking at a cost of living, I did calculations at two and three percent. I think I submitted the two percent after talking to Kristen. And I also put in the normal, what I always do almost every year is five percent for merit. That covers a raise anywhere from zero to five percent. And you don't get a raise unless you've earned it. If you just come in and do your job and that's it, that's not worth a raise. If you excel in your job, then, then we start talking about a raise. If you were to get a five percent raise, that means you walked on water, which means that will hardly ever happen. So, uh, but those were different from Kristen's numbers. Uh, I don't know that we really had any others that were very different, did we, Kristen?
Well, the part-time was the other one.
The, the part-time, yeah, and I spoke briefly to Jeff about that. Um, when, over the last year or so, when we talked about DevNet, we were under the understanding that there might be some information that we would have to transfer from one system to the other. Based on that, using the state tax commission's numbers for, um, the production per hour. We're, actually, our office anyway is a little bit more efficient than that, but with the state tax commission, with their estimations, depending on how much information that we would have to enter by hand, we could be looking at anywhere from thirty thousand to two hundred and forty thousand. Now, the two hundred and forty was the very top and that would be over a period of two years and that would be entering, um, almost all of our commercial data, redoing all of our sketches. And, um, I think about half of our residential stuff. And I don't know yet how much they're gonna have that actually transferred over that we're not gonna have to add in ourselves. I'm not aware of, haven't received any information on that in some time.
So, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand in part-time is just a guess.
Yeah, yes, it, it definitely.
I think it's guessing on the worst case scenario side, though.
Worst case scenario and best case scenario. If, if we don't have to enter anything, that's great, we don't spend anything. So, that's where that is. And, and we would have to hire part-time people for that or full-time temporary. Because with the staff we have right now, there's no way that we could handle that additional chore. We're just barely getting things done with, with Jackie spending almost all of her time handling emails. I think I mentioned to Jeff, I may be repeating myself, but there was one day, week before last, she answered emails from the software company from seven AM to two-thirty in the afternoon, straight. So, when she's doing that, that takes her away from her other duties. And that is the only other issue that I've seen so far going forward. Now, I can't make any estimation or estimation on if we will need new staff until I find out how well this program is gonna work. And what additional steps we will have to take. So, you know, doing any full-time stuff right now would be, as I said, just an absolute guess and, and I don't know that we need them. I would ask one thing, um, and I don't know if you all want to do this or not, I would still love to be able to find a general certified appraiser. That would be a, a huge benefit to the office. Now, right now, we can't, um, apply or put out an ad for one because we're full-staffed. I would like for you all to consider letting us, put that out there, if we find one, considering an additional position. And trying to find a general certified who's gonna come to work at our office is probably about like trying to find hen's teeth. So, it's not very likely to happen, but if it does happen, I would like to have the option of possibly putting an additional person on. And I don't think I spoke with Kristen about that.
So what would that salary be? I think you sent an email out about that before.
I think that we, I'm thinking, was it forty, forty-seven? Was that the range or was it forty-two? Do you remember?
I don't know that I had.
I, I don't have that with me, I'm afraid. And that's, you know, not something that would have to be decided right away. It would be, like I said, the, the chances of finding one are not very good. You know, I've been looking on my own for about, since twenty thirteen, ever since Judy Trail left. And they just aren't out there. It's become so difficult to get the training and become certified that there are fewer and fewer people doing it.
I think as long as I've been here, you've been looking for a.
Yeah.
General certified appraiser, so I.
I, I got really spoiled, my chief deputy was, and Jeff knew her fairly well, she had been in the business for thirty-five years. She was here, not in Cole County, but she was, um, she had done original reappraisal in nineteen eighty-five. And, um, had been an assessor in the state of Kansas and the state of Oklahoma. The lady knew her stuff and she was able to impart a large portion of that to me. But the appraisal commission requires a four-year college degree and an additional three years of training to become general certified. So, there are just not that many people doing it. And my chief, uh, appraiser, she retired when she was seventy-two. So, she enjoyed what she was doing, she was good at it, but there just aren't that many out there anymore.
We have to train them and nobody wants to train them to take over their stuff. They want to train them to help them in their office and next thing you know, they get trained and they leave, so.
Yes, that, that is also another, another issue. And, uh, even on top of that, the way the appraisal commission has got it written is that if you're going to train to be a general certified appraiser, you have to be supervised by a general certified appraiser. So, you're in a catch twenty-two, if you need one, you have to have one to train one. Well, that doesn't work for, you know, for an office that doesn't have one. They've got to be trained somewhere else and be willing to come. And I've talked to, uh, one of the local appraisers about having them do the supervising of the actual appraisal work if it became necessary, if the appraisal commission allows that. And that's, it's not a, not a done deal. So, right now, we're still just looking for somebody that would be able to fill that position if it were made available. And I think we're still looking pretty good at our surplus. The contingency is in pretty good shape, I believe. But that's just something to, to put in the back of your mind for, you know, going forward in the future. And I don't think I have anything other than that. Other than that we're making a little progress with our software, we're getting some things fixed. Um, we're still slow, but things are moving forward. But we still don't have our sketches going.
I really don't have any questions.
I don't either.
So, in your office equipment furniture, what do you need?
Well, um, we've got one person who's in basically a, a cubby hole. The, the opening is about that wide and that's where their office is. And we were gonna move some file cabinets around and get them to a new location. And there may be, say, another, um, the desk itself we have, but another attachment to the desk and possibly, um, another cabinet to put files in. But I don't think there's a whole lot, you know, we're looking at.
Right now, what I have in office equipment furniture was per Brian, they had nine new workstations and ten new monitors.
Oh.
That's, that's what's in there.
That's part of that.
That's what's in there for me.
Okay, well, that's what I was trying to figure out, what.
I would, I didn't realize that that was in the office furniture portion of it, but yeah, what we're looking at.
That's what I was, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, so Brian said that.
I'm getting.
They were on the.
I was confused also.
To replace the workstations and monitors, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't have any more questions.
I guess the additional that was in there was what I had put in for the, uh.
So Brian had the workstations and stuff, but Chris was talking about office furniture.
Right.
Was, was that in Brian's too, or?
Uh, no, so the twelve-one in here is what Brian had for replacement of their stuff. The difference between my number and his is the, the other stuff he was talking about, so. Stuff he was talking.
And I knew that we would be paying for the, the new workstations and the monitors. I was aware of that, I just didn't know it was in that number.
I didn't, yeah.
So, if you look here.
So that would come out of Brian's.
He had six thousand for miscellaneous office equipment.
I think we're still, I think we're paying for the assessment fund.
Copier, so.
Is that right? So that, the replacement of workstations would come out of the assessment fund?
I think so.
Okay.
We like to pay our way.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Anytime we can.
Anything else?
Um, one other one, we may want to look at this real quick, is in programming, we still have Clear Basin and DevNet. I only put, um, Clear Basin in there for three months. Is that what we're thinking still?
Last I heard from DevNet, that's what they're saying. So, I, I think it's good to have something like that on there because it kind of holds them to a kind of a definitive date, let's get this wrapped up. So, are you okay with that too?
I, we're gonna need at least another six months and, and if you have questions, Jeff, I would direct you to Jackie because she's got a, a plan and a schedule set out for converting over from one to the other. But she's still using Clear Basin to verify the information that is coming in from DevNet. And, and we're seeing, as you saw before, we're seeing a large increase in valuation number from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
I'll, I'll shoot that group email and try to get consensus on that, cause we may need to adjust that.
I was gonna say, if that needs to be adjusted, that's just the number that I have in there at the moment was three months of their subscription and then a thousand dollars for other charges that they may have as far as data dose or something.
I don't know why I have to have homework today. I already gotta call Joe. All right.
Other questions you guys have?
Nope, I'll find out on that though.
Thank you. Anytime you have a question for me, just give me a call. Anytime you need something from me, just give me a call. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you. You got anything else you're gonna do today? Okay. And then tomorrow's eight-thirty?
Let's just call to order at eight.
Oh, did we have something before?
Yeah, I think there's a few things on there before tomorrow.
Yeah, I got Better Ward, Medical Services, Cole County Jail. Again, if we can, oh yeah, there's new business. Yeah, we're signing a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, so.
Which again, probably.
There's quite a few things on there to get done from eight to eight-thirty. Approval of coworkers, card graphs, approval and signing of L E T C and E application. And then those few things from yesterday with EMS that you added.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was looking at the eight-thirty, I was gonna like an eight. Not because I was.
Okay, I'll set up the Zoom, yeah, I'll set up the Zoom for you.
Just, just turn it, you're trying to answer some emails and then you crap them.
Are you out of session yet?
Not yet.
No, it's still on.
Did you have other business after meeting? We're gonna talk to Jeff about something real quick.
No, no.
Oh, I don't, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Okay, no worries.
I may be staying at recess till four-thirty.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.